I'd like to call the meeting to order. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge.
Excuse me. Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. I swallowed the wrong way.
Okay. We're going to move things around on the agenda a little bit. We're going to start with a 7:45 vote, sale town-owned property. But before we do, do we have anybody here for public comment?
No.
Nope. Just for public comment. Okay. Mr. Gilberto, we'll start with the discussion on the town-owned land.
Mr. Chairman, would it be possible to take up the appointment of the election workers that you have?
Oh.
I know the town clerk is here for that.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, I think it'll be quick.
Thank you. I appreciate it. This is just for the annual election worker appointment. Under Mass General laws, the registrars meet every year and recommend the names as forwarded to them by the two chairman of the town committees, the Republican and the Democratic town committees, and then the unenrolled voters who just reach out to our office themselves. So, the registrars did meet and forward on June 27th. And the list that I believe you have received, about 76, I believe, election workers are up for appointment or reappointment. And this is for the period of September 1 of this year through August 31 of 2018. So, it just actually covers one election, which is the town election next year in May. So, there are, under the law, there are three options as per my memo. This board can take upon itself the obligation of appointing election workers for each position in each voting precinct, or appoint election workers from the list submitted by the registrars as recommended by the registrars, or vote to take no action, at which time then the action reverts back to the registrars. In the past, the board has always chosen option two, to just abide by the recommendation of the registrars, and that's what I'm asking for you to do today.
Any discussion?
It's a good idea. It's a good idea. We need these people.
Absolutely. They're doing a great job. Everyone, thankful for them.
They do a phenomenal job, and I have to, I praise them every chance I get because I can't tell you how dedicated they are, and they really rose to the challenges of the early voting this year and the presidential election. And we had a new crew of tally clerks that came in after the presidential to count the write-ins, which this board voted to recommend those special election workers last October, and they stuck around, and they're on this list this year. So, they're all doing a great job. They enjoy it, and they are very dedicated, and I am lucky, and the town is lucky to have them.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Is the use of the iPads for checking, has that all been approved now for going forward?
Not yet for elections. It is approved, it has been approved for early voting. That's why we first got them, and they can be used for town meeting. They are in the certification process for elections.
So, there hasn't been confirmation?
Not yet. We're, they will be tested at a couple of city elections this fall. So, they have to go through an actual live election, and we're expecting to see certification of those probably around the first of the year.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I move to exercise the following option for appointment of election workers for elections held between September 1, 2017, through August 31, 2018. That would be option two. Appoint election officers from a list submitted by the registrars as recommended by the registrars.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schultz, second by Mr. O'Leary. Do any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Town Clerk.
Okay. We're going to hold off on the other two appointments, and we're going to go to the vote of sale town-owned land, and we're going to turn it over to the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we have two parcels that have been included on the agenda this evening. Unlike some of the other parcels where we often have had some informal discussion before the board because the petitioner has been before or submitted a letter, this is coming combined with the letter and the information at the same time. And the way the board's process has worked historically is that there's been a vote to initiate the sale of the land with the restrictions as deemed appropriate by the board, and then there's effectively an auction that takes place relative to the parcel where they're conveyed in that fashion by the town's special counsel for tax-related matters. What I thought we'd do, because it may be more useful, is in addition to all of the information that is in the board's packet relative to both of these parcels, that we would call the locations up on the town's GIS system so the board can interactively see the location and maybe have a more dynamic conversation that's a little more effective from a time standpoint.
That I do.
And I think we have representation from both of the interested parties for the parcels here this evening. So, through you, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest we start with Devens Road, 8 Devens Road, town-owned parcel.
Sure.
I believe that was the first that we received and the first notice this evening. And I think that there's a hearing notice in the packet as well.
While Mr. Schultz is looking for the hearing notice, I just want to make sure everyone understands if you'd like to be recognized, please wait until I recognize you, and I'll have you come up to the podium and give your street, your name and your street.
Mr. Chairman, I believe you may have the hearing notice.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read a public notice. The Board of Selectmen shall be considering for sale the following parcels of town-owned land on Monday, July 24, 2017, at 7:45 PM in room 14 of Town Hall, 235 Main, or 235 North Street, North Reading, Massachusetts. Any parties interested in potential sale and subsequent private ownership of this parcel should plan on attending. The first parcel in question is map 42, parcel 128. It's 5,000 square foot. Location's 8 Devens Road. The second parcel is map 26, parcel 77, 12,600 square foot, and it's 17R Francis Street.
Mr. Gilberto.
So, we received a request to purchase 8 Devens Road. And just for orientation purposes, this down here in the lower end is Park Street. This is Oakdale. The first intersecting street is Devens Road. Devens Road has been accepted by town meeting on the westerly side over here. The easterly side is a dirt road, not accepted by town meeting. The lot in question is lot number 128 with an address of 8 Devens Road, and I believe that the interested party is the owner of the property at lot 127, 6 Devens Road, and we received a letter from Mr. Anthony Sapinaro relative to the property. And perhaps it might be a good time for Mr. Sapinaro to address the board, if he's here.
Actually, I believe it's representative, reference to the letter.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Botticelli.
Good evening. Anthony Sapinaro owns my cousin, and he's handicapped, so he had a accident four years ago that broke every bone. I don't know. He's out of his body, so he doesn't walk too well. So, he's asked me to represent him. I own Colonial Land Realty in Reading, but I'm not here as a realtor, but I'm just letting, I am disclosing that, that I am a realtor. Anthony bought this, oh gosh, a lot of years ago, and he's tried. I have a letter I found in my file today. It's from 2009 with him requesting to buy it. Nothing happened. He is the lot right beside it, to the right of it, and with the building of the high school, it's really, it's quite encrouched on any privacy on that side. So, he's just, he's not looking to build a house, and he knows he can't. He just wants to assure privacy on that side because he's really lost it on the other side. And that's all there is to say to it, is he's looking for it for privacy and for not to build a house. And as you can see, his lot is quite small, 5,000, so this would only make it 10,000 altogether.
So, we're not combining it with 126? You're just combining it with 127?
His house is on 127.
But he owns 126, right? I'm sorry.
I don't know. Bobby, does he own, does he own the lot that's right next to the, well, right next to, it's way down below the driveway going up?
No. He's the lot.
I know, I know he's on 127. He's the second one in from, you know where it is? It's down on the hole. As you're driving up the driveway, heading up to the middle school, high school, down on the hole.
Yep.
Right. You know what, Steve? I think that is him also, those two.
Okay.
And, but you're right, it's not, it's.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, it's, it's.
It's not usable.
Low elevation.
Right.
So, the three together, what does that total?
15,000 square feet.
The three together would be.
126 looks larger than.
127.
It does.
126, that's.
Can you click on 126?
What's that?
Yeah. It's.
This is all primarily wet.
Yeah.
Well, 126 is totally unusable.
But this is the wetter of the.
Yeah, but this is the one he's brought.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
So, it's .16 acres compared to .12 for the other two.
Okay. Thank you.
But that lot is, as Steve pointed out, is now usable even for anything. It's whole. It just kind of came with it.
Okay. So, this is a wetlands highlighted here. You can see there are no wetlands in the immediate area there. And then, well, no flood zone, right?
Right.
Okay. It still gets pretty wet there. I mean, it may not be delineated wetlands, but it's.
Are they talking about this piece of property here?
Would you like to speak?
Yes. I own this, and I own this.
So, you can raise your hand after she's done speaking.
Okay.
I'm, I'm.
Yes, Katie.
I'm sorry. I have a couple of questions.
That's what this is for.
Because I'm confused about what I'm reading here. It says that land is for something to do with the septic system. So, if we own it, how was that land designated for the septic of the next lot? And why would he be acquiring it if it doesn't seem like it's, it says it's predominantly wetlands delineated for the purpose of a septic system replacement on the abutting property?
I think what it was, if, maybe I can help a little bit?
So, what exactly, let's just say it does, whatever the terms and conditions are, if we're not putting it out to public auction and we're selling it to this owner, what is he going to do with it? What would he be doing?
Hold on. I'm going to ask the town administrator first, Steve.
So, two, two things to be clear. The property will be conveyed at auction, subject to any restrictions. So, anybody who wants to offer to buy it could buy it if they're the highest bidder for the property.
Right.
Just to be clear, we're not negotiating with the individual. The board's asked to set the value, to set any restrictions in its action, and it doesn't often do that in its first review. So, it wouldn't be unusual for the board to not make that determination this evening in the first review of this. Secondly, the memo that you received there from the conservation agent is a bit confusing.
Yeah.
But what I understood, if I understand it correctly, what happened is there was a septic system constructed for the existing property at 6 Devens Road, and when they delineated wetlands in order to identify the location, that was flagged. For whatever reason, it does not show in our GIS system as being wetlands. But there, to our knowledge, there is not a septic system constructed on this town-owned land. It was purely identified when the septic system was delineated. I'm assuming the septic system is on 127 or 126. They're both in common ownership.
Okay. So, he owns both of those?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
These two properties.
Okay.
And he just put in a new system, the board of health, and he went through all the permitting and all that, on 127.
So, the system's on 127 now?
Yes.
And so, what, what would an individual, let's just say it goes to auction, a different owner buys this, what could be built on 5,000 square feet of what the conservation commission has identified as wetland?
So, the first thing to note is the building inspector made a note that grandfathering would need to be established for this, and that's important because the town owns the land. If the town were to seek to prove that the lot was grandfathered, it would become a buildable lot, and the board historically has not wanted to convey properties for purposes of creating a buildable lot. So, that's something that will need to be addressed in any action that is taken here to prohibit grandfathering for being established. But to that end, any person could potentially acquire the property if they're willing to purchase it under the terms and conditions and prepare to pay the taxes associated with ownership. One thing to note, and it's not unusual, I think that there is a little bit of a friendly trespass situation where part of the property is being used as a driveway on the side of this lot. When I drove by to take a look at it, it wasn't significant, and as I said, it's not unusual for that to happen in this type of scenario. I think he parked a car on it.
Yeah, his house literally is on the line. That's how, that's how he bought it. It is truly on the line. So, he either parks in the street, or he parks on the dirt beside his house.
Just a quick question to it, and I'll clarify, but in the building inspector's report to us, he says we have an application in the building department?
Yeah, to apply to establish grandfathering. So, if we wanted to apply to establish that this was a grandfathered lot, the town would need to do so, and that would be for purposes of assuring that it's able to be established.
Grandfathering would need to be established. We have an application in the building department. That being said, CPC Engineering and the fire department would need to review this. So, that's if it were to.
Yeah, there's a blank piece of paper we could fill out to seek to establish.
Oh, I see.
Well, somebody hasn't submitted one.
Right, because we weren't seeking development.
That's how it's reading. Yeah.
All right. That's what's going to be my question.
Yeah, and the other thing is, generally speaking, when the town acquires land, whether it be through the tax title or the rest of it, or the annual review, we send it around to all the town departments. You know, conservation did not necessarily express an interest in this, recognizing that an abut in the area may need it for septic, so rather than taking it under their jurisdiction, it wasn't that critical. They didn't identify it as necessarily wanting it, knowing that at some point, to undo that would be, take an act of the legislature.
If I could also interject, he is still having problems with his septic. Because of the construction that took place, it raised the water table for him, so even though he had a new system put in, he's still having problems. He may have to still move that septic because he didn't have the problem until the construction happened behind and beside him, and now it's, the septic people say it's just filling up from, you know, construction that was around it. He may still have to move it.
His septic is filling up from what?
Because the water table has changed.
Water table's risen.
From construction. And it's not just the construction of the high school, it's construction that happened behind him, I believe, on Park Street. So, it's made a difference in the water flow. I think, he's had several engineers over there. He spent about $40,000 just engineering, and they're all saying it's a stream or something is now.
Well, there's a culvert.
Been deflected. Yeah, Brooklyn has been deflected.
There's also a Brooklyn, there's a culvert that's from Gil's property heading back into that direction.
Yeah.
Along the driveway.
I remember looking at it when we were conveying the Gil's property.
But I also know that there are other abutters in the area that have expressed interest in some of these parcels, and I believe the McCormicks, they've petitioned us previously too on some of the parcels. I don't know if this one was specific. It may have been a few years back, and we opted not to sell it at that particular time. But.
Yes, Mrs. Minipelli.
Just one, if you know, who owns, it looks like nothing's on it, on 135 either. Do we own that as well?
No, I believe that's owned by the individual who's.
McCormicks.
Yes. Oh, and there's nothing on that, right?
Well, hold on. Do you want, she wanted to be recognized if the board, I think this probably.
One quick question. What is the applicant's thoughts on deed restriction of making 128 not grandfathered and ergo not buildable?
Oh, absolutely fine. He's not looking to build anything on it.
And that restriction would run in perpetuity with the land.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else in the public like to be heard?
If you could go to the podium and just state your name and your address, please. My name's Jackie McCormick, and I live at 195 Park Street. And currently, I own the lot, um, can I move?
Yeah, 135, which is the big one.
I haven't, I forgot my glasses. I own this one, which is here.
Yep.
And here. And I own this one. Don't confuse.
It's okay. So, you own both lots, right?
Yes, I own that and this, and I own this. This is where I live. And I own this one, and my son owns this, so.
What's the script?
I want to add it on to keep it more.
You said you own this parcel, and is there another one?
Your son Joe owns one in Oakdale.
There's a little piece right there. See it?
The second lot of Oakdale for son owns. What numbers that would be? 130, 130, I believe.
Is that the landlord? Is it? Yeah, this access off of Park Street to 132, right?
That's where she lives. That's where they live. That's their primary residence.
Okay. And 134, 135 is vacant land?
Yeah.
Which they own.
The last parcel is this little one here.
And that's all.
They own both, too, right?
My son Joe owns this one over here also. So, that and.
Okay. So, if you saw that all of the lots highlighted, there are some family owners.
Okay. So, what's on 135 now?
What?
What's on that lot there?
On the biggest lot, the 135, the funny-shaped lot, there's nothing on there now. There's no buildings on those other back lots of yours.
On 135?
Right.
No, there's no buildings.
And nothing on 134?
And nothing on 134.
Correct, yeah.
Seems to be all hospital.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you interested in the property as well? The one that we're thinking about selling?
I'm sorry, I'm having a terrible time hearing.
So, you also have an interest in the property?
Are you interested in purchasing this town-owned land as well?
Yes, I'd like to add it to, to here.
So, she wishes to add that lot to this kind of.
Right.
Can you click on 135, Mr. Gilberto? What's the acreage then?
Nope, you're fine. .71 acres.
Yeah. Have you got this one in? Because I own that one too.
Mm-hmm. And this one, that's another, owned is .17 acres.
7.
It's about an acre only, you had three.
Yeah. Yes, Mrs. Minipelli?
It seems like it really only would be, only people that are but it would have any interest in it anyway. He's too hard.
Unless someone would try to claim that it was grandfathered on a way before 1945, and there's 50 footage, footage of, you know, frontage on a, on the street.
On the other side, you mean?
Right, but we currently own it, and we wouldn't be petitioning for that, and if we were to sell it, my guess is the majority of the board here would put restrictions on it whereby it would be combined with and, you know, wouldn't be used for a buildable purpose, maybe for, you know, a shed or a garage or something, but not for primary residence or something.
Right, so we wouldn't agree, we would make sure that stipulation would be that.
The deed restriction.
Right, including it in with an existing piece of land doesn't give it a, the ability for the existing land to become a buildable lot or a multiple lot. Okay. Okay. Any other input from the residents? So, we know we have some interest, and the board has to make a decision if we want to put it out for bid and what the conditions will be on that. So, do we have any more public, anybody else in the public before I close the public hearing?
Just on this one?
Just on this lot.
It, it, just it's important to note that the board sometimes may not sell it, may decide not to sell it to the highest bidder if they deem it's in the public's interest to sell it to a director butler.
Yep.
For other purposes, like future septic system expansion and stuff like that.
Yep. Mrs. Minipelli?
I just have one more thing. As you, Mr. Gilberto was flipping between the first parcel and Mrs. McCormick's parcels, it looks like the valuation of.
This is ours that he's on now.
Can you flip it back to 135 and then 134?
3,400.
Right, and then what's 134, Mr. Gilberto?
2900.
So, why, how does our parcel?
40,000.
My guess, I'm just guessing, this may be some sort of an exemption because it was used for horse corrals, agriculture and farming, potentially, as opposed to that one just being a 5,000 square foot lot with the potential to be built, therefore it's worth.
Could you, just to humble me, if you could click on the parcel to the right, 127? Nope, next one, next one, sorry, that one.
120.
So, okay, and then the, what's the one to the right of it?
2600, 2800.
2800, okay. Okay.
Even though it's sold for 177.
Oh, that's interesting.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing if we don't have anyone else in the public. Okay? Close the public hearing. Board members, do you have anything else you want to discuss on this matter? Do we want to go ahead and bring it up at another meeting and determine the terms and conditions, or is it something that we can work on tonight, or we need a little more time to think about it?
The options for the, who are our motions?
Yeah, want to read the potential restrictions?
Just the ones that.
Be pertinent to the.
Yeah.
Number one would be not to be used in and of itself as a separate building and lot. Number two, the premises shall not be used to satisfy minimum zoning or health code requirements for the construction or use of any building or adjoining land. Three, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises unless the premises is combined with adjoining, and said adjoining land already meets minimum requirements. Four, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises. Five, to withhold provisions of MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 6 pursuant to its ninth paragraph.
And that's grandfathering.
Do we all agree that it wouldn't be used as a separate buildable lot, is it? Well, I think in the past, we've, if I recall, we did one, two, and three, right? And I don't think we did four and five. Ever since I've been on the board.
Yeah, when, just in reviewing the property at 8 Acres Boulevard, it appears that that was the case, and that was the most recent town-owned land to be sold at auction by virtue of a request from an abutting property owner.
So, we put this out for bid, is the evaluation price that's up here, go out, is that what the bid price is, or we set the bid price?
You set the minimum bid price.
We set the minimum bid.
You do. So, if you don't see it, receive any bid at the minimum, then the auction is closed and disqualified and no award is made.
Mr. O'Leary, refresh my memory, how did we set the minimum bid going in the past?
For parcels such as this that we're anticipating to have it conjoined with adjacent properties is to get it back on the tax rolls, is basically to cover the cost of conveyance and any legal fees. Yeah. Our policy has finally changed, rather than, you know, go with $40,000, and it isn't really worth $40,000 to somebody, but we decided it's best to get it back on the tax rolls and into somebody else's hands for maintenance and upkeep and all the rest and public health purposes. Three, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises unless the premises is combined with adjoining and set adjoining land already meets minimum requirements. Four, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises. Five, to withhold provisions of MGL, chapter 40A, section six pursuant to its ninth paragraph.
And that's grandfathered.
Do we all agree that it wouldn't be used as a separate buildable lot, is it?
Well, I think in the past we've, if I recall, we did one, two and three, right? And I don't think we did four and five. Ever since I've been on the board.
Yeah, when just reviewing the property at Eight Acres Boulevard, it appears that that was the case and that was the most recent town owned land to be sold at auction by virtue of a request from a moneyed property owner.
So we put this out for bid, is the evaluation price that's up here go out, is that what the bid price is? Or we set the bid price?
You set the minimum bid price.
We set the minimum bid.
So if you don't see it, receive any bid at the minimum, then the auction is closed and disqualified and no award is made?
Mr. Larry, refresh my memory, how did we set the minimum bid going in the past?
For parcels such as this that we're anticipating to have it conjoined with adjacent properties is to get it back on the tax rolls is basically to cover the cost of conveyance and any legal fees. Yeah. Our policy has finally changed, rather than, you know, go with $40,000 and it isn't really worth $40,000 to somebody, but we decided it's best to get it back on the tax rolls and into somebody else's hands for maintenance and upkeep and all the rest and public health purposes. We just want to cover our costs to get it back on the tax rolls. And generally, it's been at least $1,200. We just have to check with council to see what the conveyance cost would be and.
I think Mrs. McCormick's having a hard time hearing us. Right, Mrs. McCormick, you're having a hard time hearing us?
Yes, I am.
I'm sorry. So I'll try to repeat what we said so you hear clearly. If we put this out for bid, most likely it will be just for the charge that it costs us to close on the property. So it'll be in the thousands of dollars range, it's not, not too much, somewhere between, I don't want to give an exact number, but probably in the high end, 3,000, 2,000?
Couple thousand bucks.
Okay, so, Mrs. Minipelli?
But that's, that's the starting bid, so depending on who wants it more at an auction and it, you know, who it's going to be more value to is going to bid more for it. Because it looks like Mr. Sabanaro's already on it from that GIS picture, and I don't know if those lines are accurate, but.
We believe so.
You could see the.
The driveway.
You could see the house, like.
So does the board need more time to deliberate on this issue? Do we, can we take action tonight? Do we even want more time? I know in the past we've always brought it up at one meeting, deliberated, deliberated on it and then brought it up at the next, which I would suggest we do in this case, just to make sure we have everything. But if the majority of the board feels like we're ready, I would be fine with it. Anybody have any, Steve, there?
No, I mean, I'm okay with putting it out for bid and with the restrictions on it. But if you want to consult with council to see which ones best suit this based upon what we believe meets the needs, we can bring it up at our August meeting and.
Yeah. I would feel more comfortable with Mr. Gilbert.
Just a question through you, Mr. Chairman. Representative here on behalf of the owner on Devon's Road, you mentioned that there was an issue relative to the septic system. Do you believe that the owner intends to consider using this town owned land for purposes of a septic treatment field?
Only if it keeps running into problems, you know, that's been suggested to him by the engineers that come out and I really won't help.
So I only note that because I think it would play into whether or not we include restriction number two, which restricts the use, the use of the property for meeting construction or building codes, so. Note that for us to, that's another thing for us to consider, that's all. And I think the system that was constructed may actually have a tight tank already on the facility if I'm not mistaken.
It does, but the tight tank, I guess that something's looking at this condition.
Okay, so maybe I've misunderstood number two, but. I thought we, so we are saying, Mr. Gilbert, if we agree one of the conditions to put number two on there, which is the premises shall not be used to satisfy minimum zoning or health code requirements, you're saying it can't be used for the septic system?
Right, so we would not put that restriction on.
Okay. So right now we're looking at item one, which is not to be used in, in or itself as a separate building lot. You know, just speaking out loud, so we'd probably be in agreement with that one. And number three? Which would be no building or other structures of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises?
No, that's four, no. Number three is a little less restrictive, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises unless the premises is combined with the adjoining, instead of adjoining land already meets the minimum requirements of the town for a separate build, in other words, you can't.
Yep.
Build a new home on.
You can put a garage or a shed on.
You can put a garage or a shed.
Okay, so it's one and three and nothing else. Right, okay.
Can someone, can someone just clarify, is there a septic system already on the town land?
No, no, there is not.
Because I'm, what, what was that whole discussion about it? Intent, I don't understand that.
So I'll hold up my interpretation of the issues based on the limited knowledge I have, that there is a recently constructed tight tank for this house on this land, which is in common ownership.
Oh, good, okay, yes.
However, they're being advised that because the property may be low lying and maybe being infiltrated by water in this area, that it might be better to construct it on this side of the house further away from the wetland. That's how I understand the explanation.
Okay.
And not do a tight tank, but do a leaching field.
Oh, it may still be a tight tank.
It may still be a tight tank, it's just the water table may be a little bit lower there and not lifting it.
Okay.
I think that, you know, understanding that is important because while if it's combined here and there's already a house built on this property, if it's combined here, there isn't a house currently presently built on this property. Now, this land may already be developable, I don't know. But it's something we think need to be aware of based on the interest, only so that there isn't an outcome that was unexpected in the whole thing.
And also the outcome of not being able to build it, because it's wetlands too already.
Yeah, the wetland thing is not entirely clear to me to be honest with the board because we don't show it as delineated as wetlands yet.
Right.
It was delineated as wetlands.
Yeah, and I could tell you, you know, in the springtime, it's pretty wet down around that hole.
Okay, so what we're going to do is we'll have some town council look at this, would come up with a bid price, make sure the council knows that the choices right now are one and three. And that's what we're considering, and then at our August 21st meeting, we'll make a final decision. And we'll have the bid packages out after that, out and prepared, and then whoever would like to bid on it can go ahead and bid on it. Okay? Any other?
We're going to pass over this.
We're not going to, right, we're not going to take it up as a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if you have it already, and maybe I didn't hear, I would move to continue the public hearing until August 21st?
Do I have a second?
Oh, second, second.
Got a motion in a second.
Yeah, I would first suggest a time certain, perhaps 8:00 PM?
8:00 PM?
8:00 PM.
On August 21st. Okay? So we're going to extend the public hearing to?
It'll be later.
It'll be after that.
It'll be after that. It'll be, it will be advertised.
We're going to bring it up again on the meeting on August 21st, where we'll make a final decision on how the bid package will go out. You'll have all the particulars on that at that meeting. So I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. Yo, thank you for coming in this evening. Next one is map 26, parcel 77, 17R Francis Street. Do we have a public hearing notice for that or?
I think it was a same.
It was the same.
It was written in the same, yep.
Okay.
So the request that the board received was relative to 17R Francis Street, which is highlighted here in yellow. It is a property that is owned by the town valued at $45,100, it's point two nine acres. Just to give you an idea of the surroundings, there is land owned by another property owner that abuts it on two sides, you can see it noted here on the southerly and easterly sides. On the westerly side, it's abutted by?
Excuse me, is that one for sale right now? The one off of Rent Circle? You know?
No, it's sold.
It did sell?
He's in the middle of the house now.
Okay.
There's a ownership, it appears to be a, a, a single family home on, on the south, excuse me, the westerly side of the property. And then on the northerly side, and I believe, sir, you're the petitioner, Mr. Herrick, is that right? Has frontage on Francis Street now and is seeking to acquire this property, which has resulted in the notice in the hearing this evening. Would, can you click on the one we're discussing tonight?
Thank you.
That's it there? Again, just for?
What's your name?
What's the acreage on the parcel of the current house?
Point seven one acres. And this parcel is point two nine acres.
Who owns 94? Is that ours?
No, it is not, it's owned by the property owner at 21 Francis, which appears to be this lot here. And it looks like there are some items on the property, I'm not sure whose items are on it. You can see it's kind of brown in the middle there, as if there might be some things located on it, but, you know, then I don't know. And this property over here, also owned by the individual, this is interesting. Is there a house on this lot, this highlighted lot, sir?
No, it's a, it's a business.
Okay. And that's a house there, right?
Michael, could you zoom out for a second to give us an idea of what part of town this is?
Sure, it's off of Main Street?
It's behind Greenbrier, up behind Greenbrier, Francis Street, Palmroy Road, Francis Street.
I know right where it is, yep.
Right of the corner, Palmroy and Francis Street.
Thank you.
I'll turn off the wetlands.
So, did you say behind O'Keefe's is what? Behind Betty, I don't remember if I have Betty.
Betty was two lots.
Right.
And her son Paul bought that, that weird shade bought from three Rent Circle.
Oh, okay. And then the back lot of Betty's is not developed?
No. There's two businesses in there.
How do they access that property?
Down that, right there, right there, arrow is, that's privately owned though, right?
Yes, by the owner, the property owner at this location. No, I take that back.
No. No, that's what they just purchased, that her son just purchased.
There's Rent Circle, I apologize.
Do we know what the topography of 77 is, is it flat?
Half is flat and the other half is down.
The flat part closer to your home?
Yeah.
So lot 74 up there, map, 74, again, you're saying that's, that's industrial, commercial industrial?
Behind Betty's, you say, what's their base date?
No.
I mean, right, okay, that's good. And then it's, that's, that's North Ridge?
Lot has changed recently. That lot.
Changed in what respect? That's the configuration.
A piece to Rent Circle went back to Maximus Marino and Betty gave Paul a few feet to make that a limited width, a limited frontage lot.
Basically a pork chop lot?
Yeah. He needed fifty feet and I had forty where it chokes down.
Okay. And that was all approved through the planning commission, I assume? Okay, so it made it a nonconforming lot, pork chop lot?
Yeah.
And then the access from Rent Circle was eliminated?
Yeah, just give it back to Marino.
Yeah.
So it's minimum frontage and then along there with driveway?
Yeah. So Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Herrick could just come up and tell us what his interest is and?
Thank you, Chris Herrick, 19 Francis Street. For over 40 years, my family and I have been using and maintaining that lot. There was an old house there before the guy died, my annual family left it to the town. Several years ago, I removed that house because it caved in. It was kind of dangerous, I now have kids. And my septic system was on this property, my old septic system, but I've since built a new house, I tore down the old one, built a new one. I wanted to buy it several years ago to put a new septic system, but I put it somewhere else. I'd like to expand my backyard, put a pool in for the family and to plant a wall of evergreens to shield out those businesses. Because he came in and he cut all the trees down surrounding my house. It was all, all trees right there and he cut them all down. There was even some, some growing on the side, yeah, it's actually these trees, it pushed as well, it's a private building right up next to my property. Oh, it's landlocked, I don't intend to build. Just want to join it to mine, make it a full acre.
So you, would you, you wouldn't be opposed to conjoining it with your lot?
That's what I want to do.
Make it continuous?
I want to expand my backyard and add more privacy. And pull up part of the, the old septic system. It's like an old pit. It's full of mud.
So there is commercial property back there?
No.
Well, it appears it's property being used for some commercial purpose. Correct, correct. I don't want to represent one way or the other.
It's residential.
It is residential, okay.
Correct. Okay.
O'Keefe owns, Betty O'Keefe, Nora O'Keefe owns both of them. I don't know why it's not conjoined, I think she's got one of her sons in the back lot. I don't know why.
Okay, because I was, the only reason I was asking if was our lot zoned commercial, industrial?
No, Nora's that, Nora's that one.
Nora's that one, okay.
But this, this seems like the one that we just looked at where it's, you know, a butters would be.
Yeah.
A number of butters actually might be interested in bidding for it.
So as you can see, the highway business zone is nearby, this area here is Residence A.
Thank you.
So again, Mr. Chairman, I'd be interested in offering this one up for sale too and with restrictions one and three. Again, so that, you know, if he wants to put a pool in, or wants to put a shed up, or a garage, or replace a septic later on, he'll have the, the ability to do so.
I agree. Any other board members have anything else to say?
Agree with both of you guys.
No, it makes sense.
So what we'll do is we'll send this over to our town council with our recommended restrictions and then our August 21st meeting, we'll continue this hearing and make some final decisions and get the bid packages ready to go. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue this public hearing until the August 21st, 2017 meeting?
Second.
Eight oh, eight oh five.
Eight oh five. I have a motion in a second, any more discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great, thank you. All right, let's go backwards a little bit and grab the minutes. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the June 19, 2017 regular session, minutes as written.
Second.
And a motion in a second, any discussion on them? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the June 19, 2017 executive session, minutes as written.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 July 6th.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the July 6th, 2017 regular session, minutes as written.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any more discussion? It was just three of us at that meeting. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Since we're being pretty flexible about moving things around on the schedule, did we have something we need to address at FinCom tonight that we're holding you up on?
We can hear the discussion on the, on head of board.
Okay. We can go to that subject next if out of respect, so you don't have to spend your whole evening here?
Sure. Happy to give you an update. Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, Mr. Messeri, myself, along with the town administrator and Mark Clark and Andrew Lafferty and our consultants from Wright Pierce have been engaging in conversation with the town of Andover in regard to, they're approaching us, first of all, they're in response to their response to the DEIR, the MWRA project and our water proposal, whereby they responded in essence, saying that they could provide us the necessary water and would be willing to supply us the necessary water which precipitated. Are engaging in some conversation with them. Over the last couple of months, we've met numerous times to vet with them different types of proposals that they may be willing to offer the town of North Reading in way, by way of producing and providing the necessary water that we've been looking for. They've been made aware that it's in the very late stages in relation to our MWRA progress that we've made, since we have already been a town meeting several times. Appropriate the money necessary to effectuate the construction in Reading, which would be necessary to provide the MWRA water as well as construction of a pumping station here in North Reading in order to facilitate that project. It is, you know, obviously late in the, in the process, however, that being said, based upon the conversations, which I consider to have been interesting, rather fruitful and something that we should potentially consider looking at. But to date, the board of selectmen in Andover has not publicly vetted the business terms and conditions that they've discussed with us. They intend on doing that at their next regularly scheduled meeting. We informed them today that, you know, once they do that, then this board would have something to react to and we would be happy to consider that. And I would suggest that we put on our August 21st agenda, an agenda item specifically for consideration of Andover's proposal to us, which will be, again, vetted publicly up in Andover and except, I would expect some sort of an offer of parameters, business terms and conditions. of parameters, business terms and conditions and parameters, that they'll be looking to discuss with us on the fast track. It's important for everybody to note that, you know, it is our intention, at this point, we're still running in tandem, full steam ahead with the MWRA, it would be our intention to, again, let some contracts, look for contracts to be let, to start effectuating the construction projects in Reading. Should we decide that it's in the town's best interest to seriously consider a proposal from Andover that may very well delay our timeline in relation to letting the contracts and the permitting process. We have informed them that we're not looking to delay the process unnecessarily. And that, and they're asking us to take a look at this. It would affect our timeline, not only for the construction of the project, but also in relation to our intermunicipal agreement with Andover, which expires June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, which was the date that we had posed on ourselves as far as signing up with the MWRA, and turning off one spigot and turning on another. In response to that, they've offered a, they will be offering, I believe, a two-year extension on the intermunicipal agreement to provide us the necessary time to appropriately review their proposal. The terms and conditions that we've discussed informally with them would be more favorable from a dollars and cents standpoint than we currently enjoy with them. And we would expect that at the August meeting, we will have the details of that. Again, once that's vetted with them publicly, for our board's consideration. So the discussion's been very fruitful, very straightforward. It appears as though they do have the ability to meet our supply demands. It's going to require some permitting, as will the MWRA. It doesn't appear that the permitting process and review process would be any more cumbersome than what we'll be going through with the MWRA. But as far as the specifics of it, the Andover Board has not publicly offered anything as of yet. They have committed today to do it publicly at their next meeting, which is a week before hours in August. And we'll be bringing forward that for our consideration. But just for the board's information again, it's important to note that time is of the essence if we're going to move forward in the timeline with MWRA. Andover recognizes that if they offer the two-year extension, we may still opt to go MWRA. And the terms and conditions of the intermunicipal agreement that would be extended would not change. So in consideration of just providing them the opportunity to make a presentation to us. We also need to be aware that if we decide to push the pause button on the MWRA, you know, we run the risk of missing a construction season, which could potentially add additional costs if we decide to continue on that route. It will delay the permitting process. And we potentially would need some sort of additional appropriation, probably at the October town meeting, for engineering, design, or review of the Andover system, just to confirm that they would be able to deliver as they said they can. We have no reason to believe that they can't, by the way. But I think they've made a good faith effort to, to get our attention. And after their August meeting, we'll see if they do have our attention. Any questions at this point? Bob, fill in.
I think what Steve has said is, is pretty clear. I just make note that having sat through the negotiations with them on the current contract and how we ended up where we are, it's much different tone. And, you know, clearly, they're going all out to work with us to come up with something that might make sense and be a benefit to both them, clearly, and the town of North Reading. My recommendation is to continue on this path. We urge them to go public, and, you know, we'll be able to observe what feedback they get and get an understanding of what issues they may run into that they haven't anticipated from their own public. And get to a point where, you know, at the last meeting, we had, I had asked that we continue on the path, and that we be prepared to put together pros and cons, and provide all the information so that we can look at it completely on both sides and make some decisions. So we're going to do that potentially this week. And I think as a meeting that the Michael Head with Steve and the discussion, it became clear that maybe we need to get them to do a few things in advance of this, and they've agreed to it. Looking forward to see what occurs at their meeting. Their meeting is like hours broadcast, and if you miss it, usually a day later it shows up on the Andover TV.
Well, I appreciate the time that you, Mr. Messeri, and Mr. O'Leary put into this. I know you've given a lot of hours. It is very frustrating. As you know, Mr. Messeri, you and I, probably back early two thousand and fourteen, we sat across the table from them on this particular subject, and we kind of got the Heisman, and clearly got the letter that followed up later on, a few months later, saying that they cannot offer us the gallonage we're looking for, and the terms and conditions we were looking for. And so what I'm going to need, though, in addition to everything else that you talked about, is I am going to need some clear understanding of why now they can, and why then they couldn't. It just has to be understandable, because for us to make, if this board is going to make a decision to change our direction, we have to know that we're actually voting on something that's, that's real. Because all I have right now officially is that they cannot provide and meet our demands for the future of this town. We don't want to make this decision twice, and we don't want to leave it for anybody that's sitting in these seats years from now. And we have to make it, we've already, I felt we've already made the right decision. We're going down the right path. And it's great to hear that they could go back to the table and actually do this, but it, there has to be some explanation. We just owe that.
We, we have asked them, Mr. Chairman, we have asked them for a direct explanation as to what's changed over the last three to four years. And they, they will respond in kind.
Thank you.
A few comments on it. I think, I agree with a lot of things that everybody's saying here. My concern is if we kick this down the road, construction's only going to cost more year over year as we weigh if we end up, whatever attack we take. Because you're going to have costs if you expand with Andover, you're going to have costs if you go MWRA. And the construction costs never get cheaper year over year. I think it's imperative, though, that their next, I believe their next select meeting, Steve, is like right before ours?
It's a week before, it should be the fourteenth.
They really got to take this up at their next meeting.
They have committed to doing that.
Yeah, we can't wait any longer. We have to fish your cut bait. And we've, we bought a house on Mill Street. We've gone to the voters, how many times at town meeting appropriating money, probably two or three times?
Correct.
We, we got to move forward, and I'm more worried about, I just don't want our grandkids or their, their grandkids to have to deal with this issue. We want to end this issue once and for all, I think it's important.
Yeah, one thing is very clear, is that we're talking to a totally different group of people than we were five years ago. New town administrator, who obviously, clearly has spent a lot of time dealing with this issue. And a lot of the information you've provided is, with respect to their ability to provide the water, is coming from the consultant and the company that examined and came up with their new waterage structure. And I feel a lot more comfortable listening to his responses to the questions associated with that. So they are going to respond to that. And they are going to discuss it publicly. And we'll see where it goes.
Thank you.
I still view my job and Steve's job as to collect information that is clear and defensible, that the board can look at and make a decision one way or the other.
I agree. Agreed.
I'm not coming saying we got to go with Andover, I'm just saying, let's look at all the information.
We would do, we'd look at everything.
Yeah, there's been a change, and, and in terms of, you know, we started with MWRA, based on what they said. And, but things have changed, and I think, based on the potential cost issues, I think we need to look at it, and make a decision based on all the information that we have. And that's what, why we've had so many meetings, and what we plan on discussing at our next meeting.
Next meeting. Thank you. FinCom, you have any questions or anything you'd like to ask us on the subject?
Do I have one question?
Just speak into the mic, if you, I hate to do it, but just for the folks at home can hear you.
If you were to go with Andover, would you continue to draw water from the Ipswich? And if you were to continue to draw water from the Ipswich, could this ultimately, down the road, become a liability? In other words, what happens if it dries up?
So whatever decision we make as a board will not include drawing water from the Ipswich River. At least one that I will vote on. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I, I believe that the intention is, obviously, we have to make some, if we're going to maintain our current water system in tandem with something else, we're talking about millions, millions of dollars worth of expenditures in order to do that. You know, so I don't believe it is our intention to necessarily maintain our wells in a fashion which would allow us to continue to draw. And which would make the Ipswich River Watershed Association happy. But it depends upon the permitting process as to whether or not they want us to have some sort of a backup system available. If that's the case, we'll, we'll have to deal with that when it comes to it. But our intention right now is not to make any capital improvements, major capital improvements to our current water system.
So essentially, you, your intention would be to have Andover supply all of the water needs of North Reading?
Correct, one hundred percent. Yep.
A or B?
Yep, it's either going to be Andover, or it's going to be the MWRA.
A hundred percent. Both, either, either option. Anything else?
Thank you. Okay, getting back on track on the agenda. Anyone else has any other thing else on that?
I mean, I, that, that, I, I think we're already on a path that we, we've, we've recognized, we've, we've already projected the cost factor of joining the MWRA. We've already gone forward, we're already into permitting. We are all, we've already made a decision on it. And I think, looking back at all the data and the documentation and all the presentations, that was a big issue back in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. You know, the cost factor of making sure we upgrade and, you know, take care of our wells and things like that. So now we'd be going one-third our water, two-thirds Andover, to fully being beholden to Andover for our complete water supply. And that's a major concern that I have. And I was interested in your continuation of the talks for redundancy purposes, and certainly being a good neighbor, and, you know, we certainly provide a lot of mutual aid to our neighboring communities, and the importance of that factor and the sewer component of this. But, I mean, I think, two thousand and thirteen, I joined the board in two thousand and fourteen, and that agreement had been in negotiations for two years. So it's, now we're going on several years where everyone's been aware that we're going to MWRA. And I'm not sure why we don't already have all of this data and documentation and information. And we're, we're prolonging what we're doing because we're expecting to get it now in August. I don't think we should prolong anything. I think we should continue on our path.
I think it's important to note that Mr. Messeri and myself made it quite clear to the Andover representatives that this board and community are quite content in relation to where we stand right now and the path that we're on. You know, they certainly have, basically what we conveyed was, you know, if they're looking for us to consider another viable option, they need to get something on the table to us rather quickly, which would be eyebrow raising, and something that we feel as though we would have a fiduciary responsibility to really, to vet and look at. I believe that's what they're going to be doing, post haste. But they, they do understand that we're on a very short timeline. Our consultants are waiting for this board to make a final decision. We, we have a decision, they're still moving forward, they have certain aspects that they continue, continue to work on. But in short, in a short period of time, they need to know, we go on MWRA, or we go on Andover. It doesn't necessarily adversely impact the permitting process as far as the state is concerned, other than, what are you doing? But for our ability to get the permits in place, to effectuate the plan that we want to effectuate, and the timing of any construction, particularly MWRA-wise, is critical. And Andover recognizes that, they're very serious about it, they've worked very hard to throw some ideas across the table to us, and we've been somewhat receptive to that, guiding them a bit as to what we believe would potentially put it in a category where the board, you know, we could seriously consider taking a look at it. And they have now committed to bringing it up at their April fourteenth meeting, formally, publicly, and then forwarding it to us for our consideration at our twenty-first meeting. And so again, we appreciate their effort that they put in. Again, other meetings we've been to, they've been there too. And they know that it's the eleventh hour, and they know that they're asking a lot of us. And they appreciate that, and they will give us an explanation as to what's changed and what they're offering, so.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Going to go back and, back to the appointments and reappointments? And the MAPC representatives, I believe we have two appointments to make for that one?
Excuse me, just as a follow-up, in relation to the MWRA, we also have a meeting this week with Andover, oh, excuse me, with, with Reading, to continue that process moving forward as far as the river crossing and other issues that we're facing down there. So this was supposed to be an update to MWRA and, and Andover, but they were more interested in Andover at this point. But the MWRA process continues, the discussions with Reading continues, and there's another meeting Wednesday afternoon.
Is the, the bridge crossing, the infrastructure, when do you think that'll get worked out?
We will have to go before, we have to deal with some local committees down there, such as the Conservation Commission and Historic Commission down there, because there's some historical structures with the bridge abutments there. So depending upon, we're going to have to deal with both of them anyway. And again, in relation to the conservation, it's going to require some sort of passing through conservation, it's going to take an act of the legislature to get approval for that. But Reading's on board with it, they'll have a town meeting to address it, we'll have one to address it for special legislation should we decide to go that route. And we're working on some sort of a schedule with Reading as far as getting before the Historic District to address their concerns and make some proposals as to the three different paths we can take, and why one or two might be more advantageous than another.
Thank you. Anything else? Good? Okay.
Appointments?
Mr. Schultz, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Mrs. Danielle McKnight as representative to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for a term to expire July twenty-four, two thousand and twenty.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? None being heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous. Next appointment for the MAPC.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint the esteemed Michael P. Gilberto as an alternate representative to Metropolitan Area Planning Council for a term to expire July twenty-four, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any more discussion?
A willing volunteer? Yes. Oh, good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You name it. Taxation aid committee.
Yep, one more here?
This is the appointment of the board liaison.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Selectman Robert Messeri as liaison to the taxation aid committee for a term to expire May eighth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? None being heard, all those in favor?
That was on the list before, so.
Aye.
Aye.
You move for yourself?
Yeah.
Unanimous. Okay.
I look forward to getting some aid from you next time. Appreciate that, any effort you can make is mine.
That's right. I age, Steve.
When the water bills come around, it'll be very helpful. Ratification collective, I'm sorry, ratify the collective bargaining agreement with DPW Local twenty-five.
Mr., oh, sorry, Mr. Gilberto, do you want to?
I'll give a very brief summary.
Please.
This is a collective bargaining agreement between the town and DPW Teamsters Local twenty-five, which represents our DPW employees. It'd be an agreement that covers a period of time, including fiscal years twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, so that is a period of time that just expired on June thirtieth of two thousand and seventeen, and we are scheduling negotiations for a successor agreement beyond that, should this be ratified by the town. It has been ratified by the union. The agreement is within the existing overall strategy relative to wage adjustments. It's a one percent wage adjustment for fiscal year twenty sixteen, one percent wage increase for fiscal year twenty seventeen, and a half percentage point increase effective the very end of fiscal year twenty seventeen. And the major components intended to modernize the operations of the departments, an agreement reached willingly with our employees, would update some of the equipment and clothing reimbursement and uniform programs in the town to a more and uniform programs in the town to a more modern apparel. We'll make some changes to the compensation relative to some other benefits that are earned during work performed outside of the regular work schedule. And probably most significantly, would modernize the department's drug and alcohol testing policy to be more broad. Again, reached an agreement with the members of our unions and I want to thank the union representation for its being at the table to obtain these amendments subject to the ratification of the board. Again, as I mentioned, the union ratified this agreement two weeks ago and is pending before the board for a vote tonight.
Any other questions? I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify and sign the memorandum of agreement between the Town of North Reading and DPW Local 25 for the period of July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2017.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? I just want to say before we vote, I want to thank the Local 25 representative and the local union representatives. They were very respectful and professional and worked really hard to get this wrapped up and we did it in one day. And I want to thank them for their time and look forward to continuing pretty quickly here in about a month or so to continue the next three-year contract and get that cleared up and kind of get that all put to rest and really move forward. I want to thank them for their patience. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous. Okay. We're going to sign two of those. Next subject is to approve the amendment to purchase and sale of the 104 Lowell Road Polte Homes. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to stand up here just because it's probably a bit easier for me to point to the map. But effectively, this would be a modification to the purchase and sale agreement between the town and Polte Homes for 104 Lowell Road. Modifications are as follows. First, as was advertised in the bid package when we advertised for bids on the property approximately one year ago, we'll be releasing this public wastewater easement for potential future wastewater plant, which is no longer in the town's long-term plans as we have discussions ongoing with the MWRA for sewer and also look to the Town of Andover as a potential alternative for sewer in the northern part of town. So this would release this easement. Second, the town will maintain ownership of the easements for 100 Lowell Road, which is up here, 100 Lowell Road being the Edgewood property, and 102 Lowell Road, which is the undeveloped property that's owned by the town fronting Lowell Road. They'll be slightly relocated, this one for 102 Lowell Road, to allow for better layout on the property. But we'll receive the same amount of space to, excuse me, we will receive space adequate to provide the minimum 20,000 gallons. We actually are estimating it to be closer to 25,000 gallons of wastewater leaching capacity to go along with the 102 Lowell Road property when it's developed in the future. We also are looking to release an existing facilities easement along the westerly property, the Wilmington Town Line that goes all the way down to town-owned land here on the south side of the property. That's something that's going to be requested and we do not foresee that there'll be a municipal need for that easement at this point given our long-term wastewater and water plans. And finally, as we go through some of the due diligence associated with the project, this would extend the due diligence period for the transaction to August 23rd of 2017.
Thank you. Any discussion on board? I think it's a reasonable approach.
Yeah, it seems to make sense. I can understand why Polte Properties might not be interested in acquiring the easements. This particular judge doesn't do them any good. And I think it's in the town's best interest and Polte's and Edgewood's for the town to retain ownership of those. So I think it's a good idea, I think it's worth accommodating them, certainly. And what if we can do to facilitate the transaction? Let's get it done.
Yeah, no, they were very reasonable for the discussion process. We've been meeting with them a lot. And especially with the parcel for the leaching field associated with 102 Lowell Road. I think us having control of it will certainly make it a lot easier for us to sell it. And they gave us a little bit more square footage than we initially had asked for just so, just in case, so we can maybe do some expansion and potentially put a parking lot on top of it with some lighting in some areas for snow removal. So they were very reasonable in accommodating to that request, so I want to thank them for that. I also want to state that I want to thank Lincoln Properties and their representatives as well. They've been working with us diligently to try to get this process, keep the process moving forward. And also Danielle McKnight and Michael Gilberto, both of you put a lot of work and time into this, the 102 Polte Homes. It's great. Any other discussion before we take a?
So just again, for the edification of the board members and the public, we have some draft language that we received from Polte Homes. We'll probably make some adjustments to that between the two attorneys and then in the end, but it will be substantive, its substantive nature will be as described here. There may be a slight adjustment to the size of that lot for wastewater treatment for 102 Lowell Road. But again, it'll be no less than the existing flow of 20,000 gallons per day on that site. Again, as the chairman indicated, I think everyone is working very cooperatively. And in fact, particularly in the case of Lincoln going above and beyond trying to get this resolved.
Mr. Mosseri.
I just wanted to, you know, I'm in full agreement with what's being proposed here. It makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. And I'll take a motion. You might have the amendment motion. I do have it, I'm supposed to pass it, I'm sorry, it was mine. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve an amendment to the purchase and sales agreement dated March 9, 2017, for the sale of 104 Lowell Road in substantially the form submitted to the town by Polte Homes on July 24, 2017. And further to authorize the chairman to execute the final form of such amendment subject to approval as to formed by town council. And further to extend the deadline for review periods set forth in Section 25B of said purchase and sales agreement to August 23, 2017 at 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Got a motion, I have it a second, any more discussion? None being heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Next one is the discussion of the strategic plan. Last year, when we had our meeting, we really spent a lot of time on the objectives, which was great, and setting the priorities and those objectives. But we never really got an opportunity to get through the SWOT process and update it. And in the past few years, we've been meeting every year to update it, which is wonderful. But what I'd like to propose to the board is, it has been a long time since we spent a little more time than just a couple, three hours on it. If we can dedicate a little bit more time, maybe even doing it on a weekend, if we have availability, or if we're going to do it on an evening, but to allow three or four hours because I think it's time for us to review every page, go through all of the SWOT again. You know, things have changed since we initially put that strategic plan together. We have a couple new board members. And I think we've got to go through every strength, weakness, opportunity, threat and trend because times have changed quite a bit since we put all those bullets on that. And I love the document, I think it's been a very helpful document for us to continue to manage the board, especially where we continue to have change with elected officials on the board. I think it's helpful to have it to keep us going forward. But if the majority of the board wants to just keep it to a minimum of a few hours and just update what we can, that's fine with me too. But I'd throw that out as for a discussion and just get the feedback from you all, what you think. Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea. I think that we might time-wise want to wait until after the Polte Homes closing because I think that's going to impact on what we prioritize. But I think it's a great, it's always good to, especially being a newer member, you can take my team with a lot of the issues, but.
Well, Mr. Mosseri.
One of the things, we created a workshop off-site to do it. I think the last time was the first time we didn't get really through the whole thing. I think that there's a couple of issues associated with the timing too. I think I discussed this when I was chair with Michael, that he would like to have us go through it prior to him releasing the budget recommendations to the department heads. Because then he's looking at, again, what the bullet's goals are for the year and other specific issues. So what might work, Mike, is to start, maybe do it in two sessions and start with what we didn't get done last year.
Yeah, which was the SWOT.
And it may have an impact then on our goals and objectives. And if we can get that done, you know, typically the budget process starts a couple of weeks after town, October town meeting, correct, Mike?
Yes.
Somewhere in that timeframe?
Mm-hmm.
So if we could schedule it, I know what happens is Labor Day comes and then the crisis is getting ready for town meeting. Guess what? It's very early this year, which doesn't help.
No.
But, you know, if we could squeeze in a work session to deal with the latter half of our strategic plan prior to October and then maybe right after October town meeting, take the other piece of it that would fit in with Michael then working and making a release of what the goals are for the budget process for the department.
Well, that's one of the reasons why I put on tonight's agenda because of the timeline associated with making sure it was completed by the time he was ready to release his budget information to his department head. And I, that's a good idea, we could do that. We can continue to just try to do it as an evening session, focus on the SWOT piece since we didn't get to it last time. And then if we have to reschedule another evening, even if we have to do it in here for an hour or two.
Well, my feeling, Michael, is that if we go through the SWOT, right, and we flag some things, they may have a genuine impact on
Absolutely.
On our goals and objectives.
I agree. And, Mr. Schultz?
Do you want to explain what SWOT is?
I was just going to say.
Strength, weaknesses, threats and trends? Yeah. Strength, weaknesses, opportunities, threats and trends.
Threats and trends. But I don't think we have to wait till the close. I think we're on a path with that. We could make some assumptions as we're going through the strategic plan. Because the good thing about the strategic plan is it's a living document. And if something unforeseen happens, we can come back and readdress it.
That's fair, yeah.
So I'd like to propose that August 31st, the Thursday evening, it's a few weeks after our next board meeting. I'm not sure if it works and anybody?
Last day of the month is really tough for my business.
Is it? Okay. So, I'd like to try to do it before October town meeting, obviously. And maybe, how about the first, we meet the first week in September?
We meet the 5th or the 18th.
Yeah. So you want to try the week of the 11th at some point? That would be meeting every week in the month of September, pretty much. So I was trying, since we're only meeting once in August, I was trying to squeeze one in there.
Punish us.
The week before our meeting, August? Is that too soon?
Well, we're meeting that week already. We're meeting the 21st.
We're meeting the 5th, we'll be the 18th, oh, what, are you talking August?
He's talking about August.
No, I mean, if we met the week before our Selectman meeting.
Um, no, we wouldn't have time between now and then. I think with all the other stuff we have going on, I wouldn't want to put that. I really would like to allow the water to continue. I'd like us to stay focused on the Polte.
Well, you'll put it on the 31st if we're a little late a little late.
Yeah. If that's okay.
So you're 7 o'clock?
We would meet a little early and we'd have some food brought in.
All right.
I won't be there.
You won't be there, then, okay, then, you're not going to, we all have to be there. So what works for you, Kate?
I won't be there for that. That's why we did the meeting on the 21st.
Of September?
So, the week of the 11th, Kate, does that work for you? Is there any particular night that's bad for anybody? The 14th. 14th, which is a Thursday, how about the 13th or the 12th?
Tuesdays are not.
No good for you. So Wednesday's?
I have my other meetings on Tuesdays, so.
We could do it on the Monday, the 11th. Anybody object to doing that? Committee, you know, a few hours, we'd probably start it. When do we typically start on, when we meet over at Hillview?
I think we have dinner at 6:30 and start at 7:00.
So we can get three hours and that would be good. I think we can get a lot done in three hours.
Sorry, so this is September?
11th.
11th. At 6:30.
We'll make sure we take a moment of silence, a lot of respect for the day and then we'll get to work that day. Mr. Mosseri, you have any objection? Mr. Gilberto?
No, I'm fine, if I did, I would have raised my voice earlier.
So let's plan for 6:30 on September 11th. That would be great and I think we can, that way there we can pull everything off and have it all ready for the budget cycle. Okay, thank you. That's at Hillview, Andrew.
Mm-hmm.
We'll do it downstairs. You know where that room is?
Yeah.
All right, what's next? Discuss the vote. Okay, the last meeting, we discussed quickly about deciding whether or not we wanted to take advantage of the new state law that allows a designated sign the weekly warrant? Or do we want to just leave it as it is? Anybody have any druggages either way?
Didn't we decide to just leave it as it was?
Well, we left it as we were going to let people sleep on it and then finalize the decision tonight. But it looked like we were trending towards leaving it the way it was. I know you kind of felt.
It seems to be, you know, I guess since we've gone on to the electronic signature, which has been going on for several years now, there's been less and less issues.
Yep.
You can ask the finance director.
Yeah, the only issues that tend to be around special warrants that need to be signed on short notice, calls need to be made. Have to call at least three members as opposed to one. I just think it, and again, not that the opportunity won't still be there because we could have the finance director, you know, still forward the warrants to us and, you know, for those of us that like to take a look at it and see where the money's going and check certain light items in the budget on a weekly basis, that opportunity could still be there. But I just think it, in signing it, some people feel as though they own it so they want to look at it a little bit more closely too. And that's not a bad thing, I'm not just saying, current board members, even future boards, it's not a bad exercise for people to go through if they so choose.
Yep. I was neutral on the idea, I just wanted to bring it up because it was a new law. Thought we discussed it. I like it the way it is myself, so that's good, let's move on then.
I look at it, but it's already usually signed by the three of you.
Yeah, but you can sign it anyway.
Yeah, but it only requires three and it's more for me to, you know, review the expenditures that we, the payroll.
I think when you have five board members and you only need three signatures.
Well, right now, I'm not.
It deals with people that are away, generally it works.
I'm only signing the vendor one right now because my daughter's a summer hire, so I don't sign payroll. So one of you two have to sign.
They'll pick up on my phone on Christmas.
Until August, until end of August, so.
I was on vacation and I didn't even look at my phone very often, but I was able to sign the habit, it's a young habit to do it.
All right.
It's more or less, I checked my phone and it pops up and I said, oh, okay, let me take a look at this. Okay, we'll sign.
Let's discuss approving the May and June legal bills now. Okay, do you have a motion there?
I have a motion.
Any discussion? Mr. Gilberto, are you good?
Just, I'll note that after, it kind of looked a little scary there for a little while during the fiscal year because of some of the expenses that we had. It looks like we're going to make it in terms of being within the budget for this fiscal year based on the billing that's coming.
We'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for May and June 2017 in the amount of $7,977.35 as follows. Colton Minnepage, PC General, $74.96 and $35. Colton Minnepage of Labor, $481 for a total of $7,977.35.
Second.
Michael, a question?
Yes.
Close out of the year.
Yes.
Right. When we get this bill, will you be okay with the budget for?
That's what you just said, yeah.
Legal?
For legal, yes. Yeah, so there was quite a bit of activity generating and quite a bit of expense for a period of time there and it didn't look like we were going to make the projection. a period of time there, and it didn't look like we were gonna make the projection, but at this point, it appears that we will, we will hit, we will be within the appropriation.
And when does, when does the year really close out, right? I mean, as that relates to the free cash.
Early August with a free cash number coming in, you know, early to mid-September usually.
So, there are no issues that we see at the moment?
Uh, not, not at this time, no. I would say that things appear to be closing out fairly well so far.
Okay. Mr. Schultz, please.
Oh, we just read the motion in?
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
You got a second?
Yep.
Apologize.
We have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay.
Is there a second?
Town administrators report.
Is there a second motion? Was it a motion for both months?
It was together.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Mr. Chairman, I do have quite a bit to provide in the town administrator's report, so bear with me.
You have 15 minutes.
15 minutes.
To 9:30, I told you, I told your wife I'd have you home shortly after 9:30, and I want to honor that.
So, I'll just note, even though the summer has been much more forgiving in terms of rainfall this, this year compared to last, that we do have seasonal water use restrictions in effect. I won't go over them now as it continues to rain outside. But I ask the public to be mindful, particularly if we, particularly if we do come across a dry spell in August, be mindful that we do have even odd watering here in town in the evenings and early mornings only. Check the website for more information. Secondly, the annual veterans dinner has been scheduled for Sunday, September 24th at the Hillview. There's information on the website and I attached a flyer to the report. Third, updated information relative to the new public records law, as assembled by the town clerk, is in the packet, and I want to thank the town clerk for her efforts to make sure that this information circulated to all of our department heads. Fourth, we've been notified by FEMA that we will receive approximately $48,000 in reimbursement associated with the removal of snow from roofs and $3,000 associated with some work at Hillview from the winter of 2015. Yes, the winter of 2015. We have also been told to expect approximately $181,000 in reimbursement for associated snow plowing, which will follow shortly thereafter. So, I know that that's been a long outstanding thing, and part of it has been because of the flexibility of the federal government and MEMA to visit and revisit what's eligible and what's not eligible with a number of cities and towns, including North Reading. But we're pleased to hear that that's being resolved now. Health Department again expects to work with Walmart for seasonal influenza vaccination clinics. They're also considering hosting a health fair for residents in the fall. We'll continue to keep the board and the community apprised as those plans unfold. And I want to thank Bob for his efforts with the Board of Health to keep that on the radar. Sixth, I attached an update regarding road construction projects for the summer, which I will come to at the end of the discussion when I provide a brief update on capital projects. Seventh, attached is the FY 2018 cherry sheet as provided by the state based on the governor's signing the budget two weeks ago. We did see an $800 decrease in library aid and approximately a $30,000 increase in state assessments. We'll be reviewing the information with the financial team at the next meeting. My understanding from the conversations with some of my counterparts in the other communities, the increase in state assessments seems to be tied to charter school costs, and it seems to be dispersed widely amongst a number of cities and towns, not just North Reading. I, I attached a copy of the state auditor's recent report regarding firearm licensing in the state. I would just note that North Reading is one of the most efficient police departments in the state when you look at the turnaround period, and that's through the efforts of the chief and his staff to ensure timely responses as required under the statute. I want to note a couple of new employees who have been hired over the past month, in no particular order. First, we have Finance Secretary Kayla Gardner, who just started with us two weeks ago. Second, Diane Hansen, Administrative Assistant and Account Technician for the Department of Public Works. She started also, I believe, two weeks ago. She took the position vacated by Jackman Studley, who became the Executive Assistant for the department. So, that'll be a significant help here in the town hall, having two full-time staff members over in the Inspection Services Office because they cover a variety of different functions. And finally, in consultation with the Hillview Commission, Karen Mulberg has been hired for the position of Administrative Assistant for the Hillview Commission, and she started the beginning of July. So, I want to welcome those three for joining the town here, and I want to thank the Human Resources Department and the various department heads and representatives of the Hillview Commission for participating in the interview process to select these candidates. Mr. Chairman, through you, I have a couple of slides relative to the status of capital projects.
Please.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest I put them in the Dropbox folder separately, but I'll put them up on the screen briefly just to note some of the major points, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
So, there's a lot of information here, and I won't expect you to digest it all, and it's kind of hard to read at the beginning with you as well. But just some of the things that I will note that are ongoing, if you look here, this is for fiscal year 2015 and 2016's projects, most notably the sewer and water FEIRs. I think, as everyone is aware, the work has been ongoing for the past 18 months on these two projects. We are well along the path with regard to the FEIR and the DE, the DE, the FEIR, the FEIR for water, the FEIR for sewer. Some of that will be potentially reflective of our discussions with the MWRA regarding the Cochran Street Corridor and potential other options for sewer that are looking more and more realistic for us now than they were when we started the initial permitting. Probably the project that will have the most immediate impact on all of our residents, the meter project. As you know, we went for an additional appropriation at the October town meeting. The department's in the midst of finalizing a product recommendation, and it'll be meeting with a couple of folks who are outside the department, including Mr. Fode, to review that recommendation. And then, once a determination is made by that group, we would then bid for installation, and we are still targeting installation to begin in November for that project. And that's something I can't stress enough for our residents. At some point, late this year, early next year, you'll, they'll start seeing publicity from us, notices from us, and eventually be contacted by a contractor on behalf of the town to come in and switch their water meter as we go to a more modern water meter and water meter reading system. Just-
Michael, sorry. What do we do when you have a resident that will deny access?
So, what they find is the bulk, 85 to 90 percent, maybe even more, go fairly smoothly. There's a call, maybe a follow-up call, and the access to the house is granted, but the last handful, it can take a number of months or longer. You know, what tools are available to us to compel somebody? I don't know that that, I hope, I think we're hoping to avoid that type of a situation, but there will be, we know, a handful that will be, it will take some time for us to get in for whatever reason it might be going on. And there's often underlying issues when we can't get in the house, to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's projects from 15 and 16. There were, there were another, a number of projects on here that were complete in the last update. I took them off. It's just a lot of information for us to be looking at. I think we've made a lot of progress, particularly in the area of the buildings with Julie Spurnight and the work she's done and Andrew Lafferty and his insights. For fiscal year 2017, which was approved 14 months ago, some of the things to note, fire station improvements, they were ongoing. For those of you who are not aware, we've finished the work on the administrative offices in the department, and we're now working upstairs in the day room and kitchen areas. Selectman Prisco and I were over there, we saw the facility. It's torn back to, well, I don't know that it's studs, but brick.
Some studs.
And some studs.
Some, and a lot of mold.
So, the, so it's, there is some remediation work that's going on, and the project is proceeding. The windows for the building, we'll be doing the windows on the outside of it because they are past their useful life, so that, that is something that will be taking place as well. They've been placed on order and will be installed later this construction season. The October 2016, $50,000 appropriation, that's been completed. The June 2016 appropriation, which we had only the work in the town clerk, the town clerk's office to replace those windows remains, and that's something that should be happening later this year. Skipping ahead, the water, water conservation devices. So, this is actually changing fixtures in the town buildings to reduce the flow, the consumption of water. It's something that we were advised to look at by the MWRA as we're looking to go and seek an interbasin transfer permit. That's something that's going to be done in these, in these buildings that are scheduled to be started later this calendar year. Moving ahead, our stormwater efforts do continue. We have an appropriation from last year and appropriation from this year as well. There was a bit of uncertainty with regard to what the implications were going to be based on the permit that was issued last year, scheduled to go into effect July 1st of this year. As I think the board's probably aware, in the middle of June, late June, we were notified that partly through the efforts of the coalition that we've been a part of, the implementation has been stayed for a period of time. The work continues, but the requirement for compliance has been extended out, which is certainly something that will be helpful. We had thought initially that because of some of the political discussions happening at the federal level, there may be a more dramatic change to the requirements, but thus far, we've not seen that materialize. So, we are continuing the work ahead on this appropriation as well as the fiscal year 18 appropriation that was approved by town meeting. Just skipping down, there's a number of design efforts that are ongoing down here with regard to Reading. The design is underway in all capacities. This is not yet started, but that's incorrect. We do have design work that's been on hand for us for the work to be done in North Reading, and we have submitted plans to the town of Reading for their response for the construction. Really, what's, what it will come down to is the permitting prior to us going out to bid, as we've identified, and that ties back, obviously, to the larger conversation that we're having about water. And then, just moving ahead, a little bit of a preview of what's going to be upcoming in fiscal year 2018. The communications project, which is the so-called microwave system. We had a pretty significant meeting with some of the stakeholders in public safety and IT two weeks ago, and Selectman Prisco, I want to thank you for taking the time to join us at that meeting. It does appear that, you know, the best option for us here in North Reading is a separate microwave system based on the approval of the town meeting. When this note here about the evaluation is referenced, I'm referencing it just because we're aware of a parallel conversation relative to the INET that's taking place. The consensus seems to be at this point that the microwave is the right solution for security reasons, for reliability reasons, and for purposes of a, of a separate standalone system dedicated to public safety. That clearly was the message that we heard from the public safety departments a few weeks ago. The library flat roof, that's a $45,000 project. We are creating the bid documents for that project, and I want to thank Julie for her efforts on that. The town road, and when I come back to my place, it'll be the last thing I reference, which is the road construction plan for this year. You see the elementary wireless infrastructure upgrade. It was one that got quite a bit of discussion. That's actually been completed, so that's moved fairly quickly in time for the September opening of school. The computer and equipment replacement plan, this year, the $35,000, I'm talking with the IT director, will be steering towards addressing our backup capabilities, which is something we've had a lot of discussion of here, looking to establish an offsite backup capability that's more modern and in line with the current IT standards. Just moving ahead, Engine 3, this is a long lead item for us where the department's evaluation committee comes up with a scope. We generally purchase the vehicle off of a bid list that's created by MAPC in conjunction with the area fire chiefs. We don't expect it to be delivered for, until the middle or late part of next year, and there's a very thorough process that will be followed to, to address that. Some of the plumbing work that we're looking to do in the library and the police station will be done in the fall of this year. And then, see if there's anything else I wanted to note. The asphalt hut box, that's something that's, was a kind of a, got a lot of attention during the capital project. We really believe that there may not be a significant amount of financial savings, but our hope is to be able to provide a better service patching potholes, particularly in the spring, by having this equipment available to us. So, we fully expect to have it on hand for, for the pothole oversea, pothole repair season early next year.
Make sure they take the old one and trade.
If we can convince them to.
Right now, it's a hunk of iron sitting down there.
And again, as I mentioned, with regard down the bottom, the water project, that's the construction phase of the projects down there. The design is underway, scheduled to be bid after the permitting is complete in the late fall. So, I hope that gives a little bit of a snapshot.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
The elevator at the library.
Yes.
Does we have that, is that not on here?
So, we had work to, to replace the controls on the elevator in fiscal year 2017's town buildings appropriation, if I remember correctly. And that, that project was completed. And then, we had a series of problems with the fire alarm, triggering problems with the operation of the machine and shutting it down. And after, again, there's been a number of things that have been changed, but the last I, my understanding, the last issue to occur was to have some sort of component in the fire alarm system swapped out. And as I understand it standing here today, it seemed to rectify the issue. We do have a vehicle, equipment there in the elevator that, you know, will be soon approaching the end of its useful life, but it appears that the issues were more control-related and ancillary system-related than actually related to the equipment itself.
Do we have a mower for Hillview, too, this year?
So, the mower for Hillview was actually accounted for in their operating budget, if I remember correctly, as a small capital project. And it was reviewed during the capital project process with Hillview, but funded, if I recall, in their actual operating budget. So, it's a lot of information, I know. We'll try to do this update, you know, frequently along the way, so you're not just seeing it under the context of the April hearing on the capital improvements, but there's another, I can't stress enough, it's a lengthy list of projects, and after town meeting, the work only really begins, and we're trying to keep them all moving at the same pace to the extent we can, and it takes a lot of work by a lot of people.
Appreciate it.
And we're grateful for the board's support. And finally, with regard to road construction, speaking with the town engineer, we're looking at paving and resurfacing projects for later this summer, early this fall on the following roads. Sunset Avenue from North Street to Wagon Drive, which would be pavement reclamation. Similarly, Wagon Drive to Sunset Avenue, Wagon Drive from Sunset Avenue to Wyoming Avenue, pavement reclamation. Finally, Wyoming Avenue to Wagon Drive, Wyoming Avenue from Wagon Drive to North Street, pavement reclamation. Those are three that are in the same area. Wadsworth Road from Lynnwood Avenue to the end of the right of way would be a pavement overlay. And then, finally, Hancock Street, which has been done in conjunction with the development over there and a waterline installation from Devens to Dick Road would be for reconstruction. Reconstruction has been ongoing in conjunction with the developer over there, and it'll be paved this season. We've inspected the majority of drainage structures on those areas and reviewed the condition of the mains and the services that are there, and it all appears that everything is in line, and we're now working to schedule the paving.
Michael, regarding painting of lines, like on 62, some of the areas are pretty worn off, is that a state responsibility or?
So, with regard to Route 62, while it's a state-numbered road, it is local jurisdiction, so my understanding is that that would be our-
It's our responsibility.
Be our responsibility, yes. I, I'm not, I'm not certain that there's a plan in the short term to restripe Route 62. There was quite a bit of attention paid to Havel Street because unfortunately, we didn't pave it until, we weren't able to pave it until very late in the calendar year, and therefore, we weren't able to put the paint down until the, the spring, but we didn't finally get it down. But I'll, I'll check with regard to, to the various sections of Route 62.
And Route 28, that's done by the state?
That's state jurisdiction, yes. And just finally, a notation, some folks, including the board, who received copies of a letter from a resident who was concerned with regard to matters related to the Public Works Department. I want to thank the resident for his patience, and I want to thank the Department of Public Works for responding to the concerns quickly to address the grading of the, the road in question. So, thank you to both parties.
So, has the road been graded?
It was graded twice, yes.
Okay.
After today's rain, maybe a third time.
Perhaps.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Want to talk about National Night Out? Do you have any information on that, rather that you'd need us to know?
So, the National Night Out is next Tuesday over at Epsom River Park. I believe the start time is 4 o'clock, 4 to 7, or is it 5 to 8?
I believe it's 5.
It was, used to be 6.
I think it's 5 to 8.
Is it 5 to 8?
We're supposed to be down there a little early to set up and stuff at 4.
Yes.
So, if the board members want to participate, feel free to reach out to Amy or let me know. So if the board members want to participate, feel free to reach out to Amy or let me know. I will be at the grill.
What date is that again? Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. It's a great night. You get an opportunity, even if you can't work, but you have an opportunity to come down.
Is it a rain date, Mike?
Yes.
The following Tuesday?
Following Tuesday. Yep. Okay, thank you. Anything, you're all set, Mr. Gilbert?
Oh, I do have one other, two other things. Sorry.
No, it's okay. It's fine. No, you're good, you're fine.
First, residents probably saw in the newspaper last week and have seen some of the signage around town, but North Reading Little League will be hosting a state championship, Little League championship on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of this week. And I note it first because it's a significant achievement for the Little League and for the Parks and Recreation Department to make quite an investment over in the Benefento Field facility. But I also want residents to be aware that there will be additional traffic around. There will be some vehicles that need to be accommodated at off-site parking over at the Hillview, and there may be some impact on some side streets as well. The police will be out, there'll be quite a bit of signage that'll be out popping up later this week to advise folks, but there will be guests coming from out of town who will need to be guided, and there's quite a planning effort that's gone into it. But I just note for everyone in town, just be aware that there will be an inflow of traffic, and it will begin on Thursday afternoon. Yes, sorry, I think I mentioned it, but, yeah. And then, finally, again, another notice, there's been quite a bit of attention paid to Martin's Pond as we follow up on the milfoil treatment. There's going to be another treatment administered this coming Thursday, so I would just remind folks, no swimming in the pond that day, and do not use the water for any vegetative purpose, like watering lawns or plants, until further notice, just because it could have an adverse impact on the vegetation. That, I believe, concludes my comments. Thank you.
Nicely done. Thank you. Mr. O'Leary, would you like to hold a new business?
Yeah, just, I was going to talk about the Little League hosting the finals. I mean, that's quite an achievement for North Reading Little League, and again, the improvements that have been made over to the Benefento Field are terrific. We spent a lot of years and a lot of days over there with my two boys and coaching there. It was a wonderful experience, and it's a terrific program, and it really is quite an honor for North Reading to be able to host the Williamsport Finals. In addition to that, I also want to mention that North Reading Little League and Benefento Fields were able to host the Jimmy Fund Jamboree just a couple of weeks ago, and there was a feature on ESPN during the Red Sox game, which, again, highlighted the event, which was 16 teams from six area towns, over 400 kids participating. And again, North Reading got a little bit of a splash there. They showed our nice sign with "Welcome to North Reading," and one of the teams that I helped coach, one of my boys, in 2004, state championships, 11-year-old team. But again, the Jimmy Fund teams that North Reading has been sponsoring over the years really does a lot of good work and does raise some money and increase awareness for the kids as to the need to participate in these programs. And again, I was a beneficiary of being able to coach those teams over the years, and I just can't reiterate enough how great it is and what North Reading Little League does do and has done in the past. And again, being able to host these events is quite an honor because we have a great complex there. And if you are out and have nothing better to do this coming weekend, you know, the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, they are pretty good events, and it's good free baseball. So come out and participate and come out and watch. It's really good to enjoy it. And come down and see the field. Again, a lot of people don't have kids that play baseball, or, you know, it's been years since they were down there. The field and the facility has changed, there's been a lot of investment made, and just come down and reminisce and check it out. Snack Shack is still open, so. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Misery, would you, Ernie, hold a new business?
Talk to me, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I attended the CAC meeting, Cable Advisory Committee meeting. They didn't have a quorum. Our IT director was there. I played the bad guy with Comcast. They were representative from Comcast. I'd forgotten her name.
And I was the better guy.
What?
I was the better guy.
You were the better guy, right.
I was the better guy. He was the bad guy, I was less bad.
Right. But the, you know, the, there were two issues that I took, tried to work on. One was the poles, which was a little bit of a dance-around. I think what we need to get from Reading is a list of the poles and who's in the queue because there's, Comcast doesn't get a message to remove a wire until the person before them has done it. And I guess that's controlled by Reading Lay, at least it's the impression she left me. And if we want to get something done, you know, and we're talking about revising and giving them new contracts, now's the time to put even more pressure on them. And the other thing, even more important, is the fiber network. And, you know, I just told her that it was totally unreasonable that they take that away, you know, and so on and so forth. And, you know, she said, no, it's got to go, and so on and so forth. But she did leave with a little comment that, you know, after, you know, it's supposed to go at the end of the contract, but they'd probably give us a year. So it buys us a little more time to come up with the most effective solution. And in my opinion, it's not microwave, and I don't think our IT director thinks microwave is the right thing for digital data transfer. But it's going to cost money, and it's got to be put into a capital plan, and we've got to sort out just what is the best solution for that. So I had scheduled an IT meeting with Michael's help, and then, three or four minutes before the meeting, we were going to start, I had to cancel my attending because of a customer-server crisis that I got a call for, I'm at five minutes of eight. So that hasn't been rescheduled, and Michael was going to get back to me on that issue.
I believe we had, no, we had the meeting I ended up attending in your absence.
Oh, good.
It was, you know, I think at that meeting, it was clear that the microwave was the way to go for, at least the public safety piece.
Yeah, I understood that.
This fiber network, though, there is no way they'll let us take it over.
Not yet.
Not yet. See, part of it is still going because they're using it for the cable. It's only going away for digital, you know. And I think there's, why I wanted to have a discussion with the IT director on that issue is to get, clearly, we spent a lot of money on equipment to make the digital part of it work, and she's claiming all this other equipment are there, and I think it's just a cable distribution box.
The nodes, she said the nodes were there.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's all it is.
So.
Okay.
We got to stay on that issue?
Thank you, though. And I knew you two would be the right people to work with them because we're getting to a critical point where we get the contract negotiations coming up.
Yeah, and then Verizon is only six months later, so.
Right, okay. Anything else?
The Cable Advisory Committee wanted to go from the 4.25% to 5%, which I think is the limit. She was opposed to it. She was, she didn't, I don't think she really understood until she was told when the Verizon contract ended. I think she was thinking it's a long way off, and that would give Verizon, you know, competitive advantage in terms of pricing, even though it's going to the town. I mean, it's going, it's going to the Cable Committee, you know, the, because I think both of them are at 4.25 at this point. And, you know, that's, that's an issue. If it goes to 5, it gives NorCam more money to deal with whatever they're going to deal with. But I stayed out of that issue. I was really more concerned about the things that were going to be major capital costs for the town. I don't know where the board stands on what kind of rates should be added to the cable bills of all our citizens associated with that portion of the bill, which is currently 4.25%.
I think we got to look at the finances of the existing cable network.
Yeah.
I mean, if they have plenty of funds, then there's really no need to raise.
Yeah, they have accumulated a lot of funds, as you and I.
They've got a lot of money.
And there's, you know, there's still the issue with the school department and the video and the gyms. And the last thing is just a question to board members. Have you received an email that apparently looks like it's coming from Microsoft, saying that your mailbox is getting full? Am I the only one?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, if you do, it's coming from the town's email server, and I guess they're set up with 2 gigabits of data. And if your email is getting close to, you're going to get a notice, and I've asked Michael to expand the email, otherwise, you're going to have to start deleting it. If you're doing it only on your phone, you can't get to it to delete. You really have to bring it down on Outlook or something, and I wouldn't delete it, I'd archive it, but I would think the town record would want to be maintained with these.
Well, I did ask that question last week, and no, regardless, if you delete it, it doesn't get deleted. It's, they capture it forever. I guess, end up.
Well, that may be. They may be doing a backup or something to capture it forever.
Bob, in regards to the poles, RMLD, I thought, provided us a spreadsheet that showed even the ones that North Reading was in the queue to start taking off, right?
I have not seen that.
So we received, I have a document that, I don't know, I'm not really sure what to do with it because it's got dozens of different columns in it. It's not necessarily easily legible to tell what you're looking at. I'll put it in Dropbox, and the board members can look at it.
Yeah.
I couldn't make the details of it.
I'll take a look at it and see.
But I thought they pulled a summary for us.
They do have a summary.
Yeah, and I think that would be helpful for Comcast to look at as well. You clearly see what ones Verizon's, we had some for North Reading, and there clearly was some.
So what Comcast said to me was, unlike some other companies, and I think they were referring to Verizon, right, when they get a request, when there's a pole to be serviced, they take care of it. They don't wait until they're all queued up and then hire a contractor to come in to a whole bunch of them. That's the point she made, right? But they don't do anything until, I got a feeling that Verizon is next on the list. I don't know that for certain.
So when we were doing this with the issues associated with the poles for the new school project? The town had to go first, I believe, and then Verizon, then Comcast, and then RMLD.
Anyway, if we get the list, we can put the heat on the appropriate people and get it done. It's, in my opinion, it's out of control right now.
Well, let's hope we can get it back in the control. Anything else, Mr. Misery?
No.
Andrew?
Yeah, real quick, I had a pleasure today hanging out with the Reading, North Reading Chamber of Commerce. They had their annual golf outing, and it was great to see all the local small business owners, and I always encourage everybody to shop local and support the little guys. I think it's very important that we support our talented businesses, and it's great to see a lot of them out there today.
You should know enough to get in and out of the rain, too.
I know. It was a little soggy out there. The weather committee did a bad job, but the rest of the, yeah, that was great.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Just make a note on regards to our North Reading Little League and the Diamond Club as well. They do a fantastic job, and the facility does look fantastic right now. But they are having their second annual North Reading Diamond Club Golf Tournament on August 11th. I want to make sure the public knows that, and it would be wonderful if you had the opportunity to come out that day. It's Friday, 8:00 AM tee-off down at Hillview Country Club. It's a great cause. You can see the money's going to a great use when you look at all the fields in town, all the baseball fields, and the programs they run. So I hope the community comes out and supports that effort on Friday, August 11th, 8:00 AM.